Appreciate all of y'all coming out tonight in the rain. It's one of those nights where no one likes to get out, but appreciate you coming out. This time, I would like to call to order the Hardin County Board of Education meeting, and if you would, join me in saying the pledge to the flag up here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. We'll have the board commitments by Dawn Johnson.
To improve our effectiveness, the Hardin County Schools Board team commits to keep children first, listen, be prepared, be professional, demonstrate financial stewardship, represent the entire district and support district goals, and support board decisions.
Thank you. And we have a lot of recognitions tonight. I think some students got held off till this month. Normally, we do it in January, and it's been a messed-up season for the last couple of years. So Mr. John Wright will take care of that for us.
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you can tell, we have lots of recognitions this evening. It's why we have this February board meeting here at the Performing Arts Center. So I would like to thank Bart and his team for always making, for always accommodating our crowd, and they do a super, super job. First of all, Mr. Chairman, I would like, well, I guess you need to pass those resolutions. So let's do that. I apologize for that.
We do. Alright, we have a resolution for student staff recognitions. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we accept the resolution. It's written.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, second to five is saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post. Motion carries. Good to go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize for skipping over that. We would like to, first of all, recognize our Stronger Together Award recipients that we did not get to recognize in January, and three, rather four wonderful individuals, and you'll hear about those. First of all, Mr. Bergen, come on up here, young man. And there is, yes, there is a plaque there for these folks. Go ahead. Let's, let me tell you a little bit about Zachary. He's a seventh grade student at West Hardin Middle School. Listen, Mr. Chairman, to what this young man did. He recently exhibited a great deal of kindness and compassion in this way. He, West Hardin Middle School has an auction twice a year. Students use Laker loot, which is fake money. They earn throughout the year for positive academic acts and behavior acts to bid on the donated items at the auctions. There are several big items like Chromebooks, TVs, bicycles. So Zachary bid everything he had, which was $451 in Laker loot, for a bike for his friend who had never had a bike. He could never take that, he could have taken that bike home for himself or bought something else for the Laker loot that he earned. Instead, he gave all of his earnings to a friend. Thank you, young man. Appreciate you. Next is Ms. Karen Compton. She's our Stronger Together Staff Award winner. She is a medical science pathway teacher at the HCS Early College and Career Center. She is truly dedicated to her students and takes a holistic approach to her success. A student recently emailed EC3 Principal Dan Robbins to share that Ms. Compton makes it a point to make sure that all students have everything they need for success. She has made gift baskets for students to include things that young people need. She keeps change for students to use anytime they need for something from the vending machine and keeps a snack corner in her classroom for students who do not want to ask for money. The student also, in his or her email, said that Ms. Compton is simply an amazing teacher and friend. She certainly deserves an award for her kindness, and you got it. Thank you, Ms. Compton. We appreciate you. Next, we'd like to recognize my friends Holly Sexton and Megan Stith. They together co-own Boss Lady Coaching. The Boss Lady Coaching website says that the company supports women as they develop habits of bravery. This is a great descriptor for what Boss Lady Coaching owners Megan Stith and Holly Sexton did for our district's seventh grade girls at the Girls Incorporated Conference in October. Our district's middle schools brought the young ladies to the Hardin County Extension Office where they met in groups with various community leaders about careers and answered their questions about past success. Boss Lady Coaching found mentors and asked them to speak to the young ladies. In the years past, they have brought various speakers to Girls Inc. activities who brought their insight to our young ladies about shattering glass ceilings. We certainly owe a debt of gratitude to Boss Lady Coaching for helping us help students succeed. Thank you all so much. We appreciate you. Alright, next is our student recognitions, and, and Mr. Chairman, these student groups, they're gonna walk across this stage and they're just gonna say their name. They're not gonna say their award or anything like that, but I'm gonna introduce these groups to you. First of all, is the Central Hardin High School Beta Club. Come on in Bruins. These students succeeded at the, at the state Beta Club level, and like I said, it's all the resolution recognition, and they're gonna say their name as they move across.
Cameron Miller.
Brianna Blankenship.
Presley Decker.
Elizabeth Pepper.
Grant Avis.
Elena McNeil.
Ashley Lowe.
And students, if you would like to gather there just as a small group, just to take a picture, so I'm sure moms and dads would love to have a picture with your group. I did not describe that out in the hallway, so that's, that's my fault. Just give them a hand. Thank you. Scooch you in. Moms and dads wanna? Alright, thank you Bruins. Appreciate you. Okay, these students represent the John Hardin High School Beta Club, which did very well at state competition.
Bulldogs.
Lucas Cowan.
Kiara Tucker.
Kenneth Ritchie.
Congratulations, guys. And moms and dads, on the resolution of recognition on our website, you can see the accomplishments that these young men and women achieved. Alright, North Hardin High School Beta Club. Trojans. Thank you. Congratulations. Obviously, a lot more students earned awards, but obviously because of the rain and various other activities going on, they could not all be here. Alright, East Hardin High School Beta Club. Come on in Bruins.
I think that's middle school.
Yeah, East Hardin Middle School. I'm sorry. I might have said high school. It used to be.
Eddie May Williams.
Addison Garland.
Presley Abel.
Tabitha Riggs.
Leah Riggs.
Adeline Murray.
Leila Abdel-Rahman.
Ashley Borders.
Will Richardson.
Carson Williams.
Jude Tabor.
Jack Malone.
Kirsten Williams.
Reagan Castor.
Sarah Wall.
Maddox Adams.
Brody Evans.
Clarriates.
Mallory Pretty.
Kylie Davis.
Kresha Patel.
Emma Haynes.
Colton Smith.
Just give them a hand, please. Thank you all. Appreciate you. JTA, come on up, Trojans.
Grayson Platt.
Congratulations, guys. We appreciate you. No one from Creekside is here. They had one winner, Piper Wilcox. She finished second place in elementary fiber art, so congratulations to Piper. Okay, Heartland Elementary. Come on up Bulldogs. I'm sorry. Yes, this is also Beta. All these students are Beta Club.
Suri Housil.
Abi Kaz.
Claire.
Kendra.
Bryson.
Kyler.
Congratulations, guys. Appreciate you. Alright, Lincoln Trail Elementary School Beta. Come on Bruins.
Lucas.
Finley.
Madeline.
Maggie.
Vivian.
Good job, guys. Congratulations. Alright, this group of Central Hardin Bruins is our all-state band members, which that is not, and easy process. These guys have worked hard in and out of the classroom. These are all-state band members from Central Hardin High School.
Jonathan Devers.
Lily Giel.
Alex Nguyen.
Wyatt Nguyen.
Congratulations, guys. Awesome. And Mr. Chairman, the next group is our biggest group. These are, these young men and women are from the North Hardin High School band. In my 12 years in this role, I've never, we've never not had a North Hardin band at this, at this board meeting, because they've always finished first, second, or third in state competition. So they have a tradition of excellence, and you'll see why when these young men go across, young men and women go across the stage, because they're, they're just good. They're great. Go ahead, guys.
Student. Student.
What's your name?
Jane Furlott.
Zoe Maddox.
Grayson Platt.
Jaden Lathrup.
Leah Sloan.
Kayla Starling.
Toby Smith.
Katherine Latham.
Brooke Russo.
Jacqueline Hake.
Marie Roth.
Matthew Query. Nicholas Hake.
Brooklyn Crawford.
D'Angelo Hughes.
Emily Hart.
Alexis Bolinger.
Jimmy Perkins.
Caleb Ashlock.
Tyler Pennington.
Eric Castro.
Christian Clayder.
Janaya Bowe.
Riley Aikenberry.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
El Cardona.
Congratulations.
Elena Wood.
Selena Hyder.
Keegan Williams.
Adriana Bell.
Caitlin McCall.
Janetra Hawkins.
Sophia Baumgartner.
Lily Rose Hubbard.
Rachel Reynolds.
Caleb Train.
Andrew Flickinger.
Janaya Banks.
Tayja Allen.
Emily Simmons Lee.
Latayja Lynn.
Trinity Glover.
Nicole Cook.
Brianna Powell.
Siobhan Dean.
Angela Heck.
Nakia Murphy.
Robert Brown.
Elia Milton.
Brayden Barber.
Thalia Carmichael.
Deborah Myers.
Uriah Council.
Yiheng Choi.
Hannah LaVada.
Timothy Scott.
Savannah French.
Jaden Lachale.
Naisha Warner.
Zelaya Em.
Courtney Pittman.
Jay Sean Bow.
Gabriella Palomo.
Keiko Razzoliando.
Katherine Patterson.
Joey Cut.
Thomas Logston.
Riley Phillips.
Lauren Wykov.
Thank you.
Gabriella McCoy.
Michael Chandonay.
Cadence Ward.
Hannah Wagner.
Thomas Miller.
Kayla Hamilton.
Diego Gerardo.
Zane Fagans.
Connor Lake.
Caitlin Matthews. Zoe Myers. Taylor Holly.
Will Meyer.
Skylar Hansel. Zoe Garrido. Issa Patel.
Blaine DeJordy. Michael Rowe. Andy Sloan.
Just give them all a big hand, please. Alright, thank you, young men and women. We appreciate you. Good job. Mr. Chairman, we would be remiss if we didn't recognize the Director Kelsey Dunn, former Director Brian Froge, Assistant Director Miles Kellett, and Assistant Director Isaiah Kuamo. And we, we are not, we are kinda done with recognitions, but we're kinda not. So Mr. Stith is going to ask some members of the green teams at the schools, they're not on your resolution, but we just wanted to bring them to you tonight. They're gonna, some of those groups will present to you, so we'll do that here in just a second.
As I was saying, this, this is what it's all about. We have terrific students here in Hardin County Schools. Parents spend endless hours getting these students to these extracurricular activities that they participate in. You can just imagine the amount of money that's been into a group like the band. That is one huge group, and it's a lot of, a lot of work for the parents and everyone, and we certainly appreciate it. We've had a lot of, they're champions. They really are. They've, they've come a long ways, and hopefully it'll pay off. There'll be a lot of things that they can do for the rest of their lives and enjoy music and different things that they've done, and it's, it's, it's great. We really appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I am gonna turn it over now to Mr. Stith and Mr. Kyle Lucas, our energy manager.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Board, for the opportunity to be here tonight to talk about our green teams. This is not a state champion recognition. I would argue, though, this is a local champion recognition. They're doing a great job saving the district money, and we have some awards. We have a good partnership with Train Controls, and Ms. Kristy Fetch is here, and really appreciate her work to help us recognize and celebrate our schools and what they're doing to save energy and to save resources. So I want to introduce Mr. Kyle Lucas. He's our energy manager. He works very closely with Ms. Fetch and the green team. Does a tremendous job. Not only does he help them learn about ways to save energy in schools and ultimately at home, but he takes it a step further. His, his knowledge and background in HVAC does a tremendous job saving the district resources and maximizing those local revenue dollars that, that we have. So with that being said, I'm gonna get quiet, and we're gonna start bringing up some of our teams. Some of our teams have two years. They, they won't get a plaque tonight. They got their plaque last year because they earned their certification last year, but we do have some, four new schools that will be adding to those roles, and as they come across, we'll make mention of those. So Kyle, do you wanna introduce our schools? Yeah, I'm, I'm proud to say that we have, you know, district-wide, you know, cooperation and participation in this program, which really helps us in saving energy. And today, I would like to introduce seven of those teams. Others had prior engagements and couldn't make it, but we have seven teams with us, and I want to introduce first Cecilia Valley's Green Team.
Ava Smith.
Kenley Blaine.
Kennedy Smith.
Macy Bland. Marlee Newman.
Next, we have North Park Elementary.
My name is Sabrina Morgan, and I am their sponsor. This is Amari Simmons. He's a little nervous today.
Good job.
Hey, Zaden.
There you go. Awesome. Say your name.
Garrett Ford.
Good job, Garrett.
Sophie.
Awesome, Sophie.
Harvey.
Awesome.
Zoe.
Good job, Zoe.
Kira.
Awesome.
Mia.
Awesome, Mia.
Zaden.
Say it again.
Zaden.
Awesome, Zaden.
Stella. Gabby.
Good job, Gabby.
Charles.
Good job.
Kayden.
Good job. Say your first name. Come on, baby. Can you say your name? Can you say your name for me? Say your name.
Amelia.
That's it.
Austin Strible.
Awesome. Gimme.
Parker Waltrip. Kelly Newell. Aiden Gonzalez. Rachel Knoll. Destiny Peters. Elijah Pickett.
Next, we have Vine Grove Elementary.
My name's Amanda Patterson, and we have Leilani Boyd and Maggie Basham, and also Jalen DiMaro, who isn't here, but one of our members is here.
C.T. Robinson.
And I just wanna say, I do apologize to Cecilia Valley was one of those schools also that scored Energy Star for the second year in a row, and Vine Grove is one of those schools as well that's with us today. Next, we have Ronnieville Elementary that scored Energy Star for the first time in the 2021 school year, and Ms. Pamela Johns, the green team sponsor.
Kayla Haynes. Marshall Whalen. Jackson Miranda.
They too scored Energy Star for the first time this year.
Lucas Colby. Caitlin Chisholm. Erin Jacobs. Udiens Studer. Ebony White. Kayla Duratt. Marlee Baker. Harper Sun. The Heath.
Last, we have with us one of our high schools, Central Hardin High School, with the sponsor of Ms. Argretta.
Margaret Powell. Aubrey Konwinski.
Alex Argretta.
Now, at this time, I'd like to introduce to you Ms. Kristy Fetch. She is our partner with Train, and I wanna introduce her and appreciate all the hard work that she's helped us accomplish. Thanks to her, we were able to get these awards for these new schools that scored Energy Star, and I really appreciate all the work she's done to help us save money.
As Kyle said, I'm Kristy. I'm with Train. Thank you for having me tonight. I just wanted to tell you briefly, when we say that these schools are Energy Star certified, that means that these schools are performing in the top quartile, so in the top 25% of like buildings. It's not something that's easily achieved, especially because we're not going to negatively impact the learning environment. We wanna make it a better environment and help children with their indoor air quality. And for every dollar that's not sent to the utility company, it can be reinvested in the district for resources. So together, we have partnered with a program called Intelligent Services. We use real-time building data at the buildings that are listed here on the screen. We use that along with real-time utility data to figure out how together can we work with green teams, as well as the data that we're collecting with our engineers, and make these more efficient environments. So you can see, as the program has grown, we started in 2017 together, just with two schools, and we've continued to integrate more schools to the, to the program. And as it stands today, we're at a net of $325,047 just for these, let's see, what is it, eight buildings. So just with those partnerships together. Again, it's an awesome partnership because this money is no longer going to the utility company, instead staying within the district. I'll turn it back over to Kyle.
Currently in Pat, and for the past year, KU has been offering some rebate programs through any specific building improvements that cut down on energy consumption. Here are four of those projects that we've been able to do in-house with our own maintenance department. The top one you'll see there is North Middle's parking lot. We were able to update that all to LED and those, those numbers there are the rebate checks that we received from the utility company. So anytime we can get money back from them, that, that's a plus. But you'll look at the three there at the bottom, JT Alton, we're eventually going to have that school all LED. And right now, what we've completed thus far is several classrooms on the main floor area, the cafeteria and the gym. And we received a rebate check of $3,697 there, which is something that we received about, about 43% of that rebate check towards the total cost of that equipment, which is really good. The asterisk beside it with the other ones as well is on LED tube replacement, they were offering $3 per tube. And we were able to get those at $4. So you can see that we made, you know, a 75%, you know, return on investment there at the initial cost. And you see those return checks that we got for Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Shop and West Harden Gym and Cafeteria and Choir Room. Again, a big shout out goes to the maintenance crew and the, the electricians that we have. Being able to do this all in-house has been able to allow us to keep ROI, ROI's down and allow us to progress with some of these rebate programs. You know, as anybody else having to hire in outside help, that kind of cuts into that return on investment, which with all these, we're seeing about a two to four-year return on investment. So this, this money that we've put forth into the classrooms is going to be coming back to us tenfold on our utility bills as well. With that being said, another big shout out needs to go to the Harden County Schools' green teams. I know we introduced them, you know, earlier, but I've got one that's with us here today that would like to, you know, discuss a little bit about what they do inside the school classroom. They truly are conserving energy and creating a greener future for all of us. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Sabrina Morgan, sponsor for one of our youngest green teams in the district. These are all preschoolers and kindergartens.
So you want to tell them a little bit about what we do? Okay, Luke, go ahead and start telling them what we do.
We check if everybody's saving energy and put door hangers if they're doing a good job or if they need to work on it.
Garrett, tell them what else we look for.
We make sure all the sinks are off and we make sure there are no leaks.
That's right. What else? You're scared. How do you want to say something? Okay, come on up. What else do we look for?
We look if it's, computers are on, computers are off, and our smart boards on.
That's right. Who else wants to say something? Anybody else? Charles? No? You want to say something still? Go ahead and tell them what else we look for.
We take.
Who tells, we tell all the teachers and our parents how to save energy? You want to tell them? No? It's okay. We go ahead and tell all the teachers and all of our parents too, how to save energy in the school, right? And what do we use to go around to check at the rooms?
Do the lights are off?
We check to see if the lights are off? What do we, what do we use to go around and check with, Kira?
And we help, we, um, we do, we have clipboards.
We have clipboards and we make tally marks, the things that we see that are...
On the paper.
On paper, that's right. So lots of stuff we do. We start them young and they are ruthless.
Yeah. And while they are up here, I just turn your attention to the PowerPoint here. These are pictures of them going through and handing those door hangers on the doors. And I've also got a video of one. I don't know if it'll show up. There we go. Let's see if it'll play. Oh, it, it didn't play. But they, they were giving, you know, a door hanger to one of the teachers to congratulate them on doing good energy practices in, in the school. And this is another picture of North Park's kids. And back here is a little picture of some older kids, some that already passed through. Cecilia Valley and Heartland, they're actually performing their energy audits on their Chromebooks with a Google form that I created. That way they can go through and use technology and actually as they submit each thing, each of their findings, they can send an email out to the whoever it needs to go to, whether it be the principal or somebody that's having issues with forgetting to turn the lights off or whatnot. And lastly, I'd just like to take a time to recognize those nine schools that we've had in the district that scored Energy Star for the school year of 2020 to 2021. And then the four new schools that we had was Heartland, North Middle, Radcliffe and Ronnieville Elementary. The, the schools that also scored Energy Star again for the second year is Cecilia Valley, G.C. Burkhead, Creekside, Meadowview and Vine Grove. I want to reiterate to you that this is an annual award, so it's no guarantee that just because you scored Energy Star the previous year, that you'll score it again for the 2022 year. But I'd like to see more, more schools get on that list and hopefully the same schools will get it a second year. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Jury, why don't you come on up here? I'm going to introduce Ms. Tanya Jury, Dr. Tanya Jury, Principal at Bluegrass Middle School. And she's going to be talking to you all about project-based learning, kind of where she's at in that process this year. As you know, that's a student-centered approach to teaching and learning, kind of force those students to how they're going to acquire their knowledge through those real-life problem-solving skills. So she's got some things she wants to share with you tonight and I appreciate the work they're doing with their sixth-grade teachers on that process.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. I'm going to pull the presentation up for you real quick. As he said, I am Tanya Jury. I'm the principal at Bluegrass Middle School. I brought some students with me, so I'm going to let them introduce themselves as well.
My name is Emilla Rice.
My name is Juliana Gregory.
My name is Tucker Miller.
My name is Amari Jones.
So we're going to, they're all sixth graders at Bluegrass, so I'm going to share some information with you and then I'm, it's best to hear from the kids. So I'm going to let them share their experiences with you as well. As Mr. Sutton said, we are talking about project and problem-based learning at Bluegrass. So the first question that some of you may have is what is, what is that? What is problem-based learning? It's an approach to real-world problems and letting the students figure out the solutions. So we always get the standards and then we look at, okay, what are we going to do at the end? What's the test we're going to take? But with project-based learning, the students are investigating throughout and so it's not they just wait until the end to see if they know what they're learning. They learn throughout and we have benchmarks with that. So as a school, we've been partnering with New Tech Network. New Tech is a national nonprofit organization. They have over 200 schools in 24 states that they're working with and they work with us, coaching us. They give us professional learning and support us through this process. So in order to effect change at the school level, especially with something as large as project-based learning is, because it's a new way of thinking and learning, there's a hierarchy that we go through to make sure that we're doing what's best for kids. And the first one is that we have to have a purpose and we have to have a mission and that has to be very clear and communicated. Once we do that, we have to make sure that the culture is right. So we want to make sure that the culture in the building is correct, the culture in the classrooms, and we build that. Moving on, once you're able to do that, you establish the policies and the structures and then that's when you start to see that change in the instruction and eventually the impact on student achievement. And I have some numbers that I'm going to show you here in just a second that are very, very exciting to where this project-based learning has impacted the instruction at Bluegrass. Along the bottom, you will see learning outcomes. These are things that we ask that these students be able to do before they leave Bluegrass and that's the standards, knowledge and thinking, oral communication, collaboration agency, which is being responsible for their own learning, and then written communication. So we started with our purpose and our mission, which is we want to be student-centered and have a positive learning environment for all of our students. We started this year with our sixth grade and are interested in going to seventh and eighth grade as we continue. So here is the slide that makes me the most excited because I'm a data person. I want to see, is it working? Is it not? So you'll see that we just took the winter I-ready test and at this point in the year, we would like to have our students at 50% of their annual typical grow, growth goal. And of our sixth-grade students in math, 69% of them have hit that and in reading, 81%. And again, we should be at 50%. So that speaks volumes to me. The other part that speaks volumes to me is our sixth grade has the lowest discipline numbers in the school, but if you take a look, they have a 77% decrease in major discipline referrals. And so that, that is massive because they want to be in the classrooms. They want to be learning. They're engaged with what they're doing. So that's very important to us as well. We have a video that we're going to show you that gives you just a small glimpse into what their day-to-day looks like at Bluegrass. I am Tanya Jury. I am principal at Bluegrass Middle School. Bluegrass this year has piloted project-based and problem-based learning with our sixth graders and it is an opportunity for our students to really look at hands-on learning in the classroom and how they can apply that to real-life examples. So we have done projects like recycling is one that's going on right now. We had students go around and swab the school to see which area was the germiest and then they took that and developed their own project. So they wanted to know, is hand sanitizer better or is washing your hands with soap better? So it's really getting the students to see things from a bigger picture instead of just sitting and doing worksheets all day. They're really investigating and doing their own, solving their own real-world problems. We're very excited to have HCCTV come in and be able to showcase what our students and our teachers are doing. They've worked very hard this year. This is a new way of thinking, a new way of learning. So students are so used to just sitting in a classroom all day, every day and listening to the teacher. And now really they are taking ownership of their learning. So we're excited to showcase what they're, they've been able to do and show how they're actually leading their learning while the teachers are more facilitators in that.
It's definitely way more interactive with how you do everything. It's not just have a pen and paper, write this, turn it in, good grade, yay. But, but that's not really teaching you anything in life and that's what school is supposed to do. So I think it's really more efficient.
Project-based learning also attacks real-life scenarios and things that I'll be able to actually apply to my life.
Basically, what it amounts to is we have the standard. I give it to the kiddos to begin with and they start throwing ideas on what they want to find out with it. As long as it can match in with the standards, I'm game for it.
I can really see the communication skills, the listening and speaking skills that they're learning in the work that they're doing. I can see that when they interact with me and with their peers. And so I try to, try to address those things, those positive things too, when I, when I'm working with students.
Instead of coming in and maybe one class period being dedicated to something, you might have a week or two where you're working on a larger project with lots of content from different areas and getting an actual product out of it in the end. Maybe a brochure or a video or some sort of project or community service that you're taking into the community.
With these initiatives, we're really kicking it off because last year, I bet it wasn't fun for anybody just because of COVID-19. But this year, we're kicking it off.
Centimeters are small compared to inches. So how far do you think your car is going to make on carpet?
I know in my classes, whenever students are allowed to do projects like this, they have a lot more buy-in than when it's just me talking at them and them writing down notes.
Thank you all for watching and learning more about Bluegrass Middle School. As a principal, it's very exciting for me to walk into a classroom and to see the excitement on the students' faces and to know that they're learning, that they're leading that learning and that they want to do that. We have several opportunities coming up for, across the district, to showcase what's going on in the classrooms. We have a teacher panel coming up on February the 24th to where teachers who are leading this work will be present to answer any questions from teachers and principals across the district. On March 24th, we have a student panel that will be doing the same thing. And then in April, we're inviting groups to come in and actually see it for themselves. So we're very excited about the work that's being done. I'm going to let the students real quick tell you the impact that it has had on them this year.
Okay, well, project-based learning has mostly impacted me because of the fact that I have enough chances to do my, do my work and make it up whenever I want.
Project-based learning has impacted me and my learning because it allows me to learn more visually and the lessons that we learn in class and connect it to real-life issues.
Project-based learning has impacted me by letting me know more about what I am learning and I get to have more hands-on on the subjects.
Project-based learning has helped me just because most of my grades last year were not good, but now I'm able to get in classes that are for me.
They said it best. So I appreciate you all having this tonight. I invite you to please come and see it for yourselves. It's very, very exciting to see. So if you would like to take a tour through sixth-grade classrooms, let me know and we'll be more than happy to accommodate you to do that.
I walked, very good. I walked into Ms. Vincent's class one day and, and they didn't know I was coming. Just want to show up, show up, see what's going on. This young lady right here, Ms. Jones, is that right? She's, this, you know what I'm telling you? She was teaching the class. She was doing the nos and needs to know and I'm sitting here watching her develop this chart and the teachers are back there just facilitating. She was teaching. And I told her, what did I tell you that day? I said, you're going to be a teacher someday. Has that memory telling you that? And she can do it. So that, we're, we're growing them right here, right now. So appreciate the work. And Ms. Swords, if you have something to say, she's done a lot of work with our middle schools on this.
Good evening. I wanted to take just a second. I've had the opportunity to learn alongside Bluegrass this year, being the Director of Middle School Curriculum, and I'm very appreciative of the opportunities that they're providing the students there. You've got to hear about the opportunities that PBL provides and I was there the day that Ms. Jones was teaching as well and she was doing a fantastic job. And this is what we want to see in the classroom. I'm so appreciative of Principal Jury and her sixth-grade team of teachers. Given what schools looked like for us since 2020, we really just wanted to regain the momentum that we had pre-COVID and they have worked so hard this year, learning something new, adding something new to their plate, but they just couldn't wait to provide that opportunity to their students. So we're, we're very appreciative of the work that they've done this year.
One other person that I wanted to recognize tonight that may not be here.
She's here.
Is Janaye here somewhere?
She is.
Okay. I would just like to say thank you to our Director of Health and Family Services. Janaye has always been dedicated to our students and staff in our district and this past two years has really been a trying time. I mean, she has had to adjust, readjust, go with different adjustments and it, it has been something that this pandemic has torn us completely apart a lot of times. And she's, her leadership has kept countless students and staff members healthy, safe. She never shied away from answering the tough questions and being in the hot seat that some parents and I'm assuming board members and staff has even requested from her. So she's counseled us, other, she's helped in other districts, just spent endless hours. And I'd just like to say a big thank you. We don't have a big medal or plaque or anything for you, but we certainly appreciate you. Thank you. All right, you're more than welcome. Okay, we have one person that has signed up to speak to us tonight and Janet Hawkins. to us tonight, and Janet Hawkins, would you come up to the podium, please? Is Janet here? Janet Hawkins? Okay, well, maybe she decided she didn't want to talk to us then. All right. Moving on. Construction updates, looks like will be next. We had our noon meeting today at Ronnieville and Alliance Construction was there. They advised us the Central Harden Project is progressing along as it should. A little behind on some geothermal drilling, but you know how that goes. It's, there's always an excuse. Of course, a really good excuse today for all the rain. So they think they're on schedule. We're going to be giving up the main gym here at the end of this month. And so Central Harden is going to have a hard time. They're going to have to find another place to have their graduation this year and, and play all away, or I guess you would call them all-away games, basketball and, and girls' basketball and boys' next year. So but we are, we're improving things. And that's pretty much the instruction that we had from our contractors. And then we've got the consent agenda to approve. We received information on the Governor's Scholars. We're approving an agreement between Harden County Schools and Family Scholar House. We received information on the 2023 and 2024. It's getting out there in school years. So we're trying to align, and that is going to happen.
Yes, sir.
Do you want to tell a little bit about the alignment of the...
Yes. We, over the years, have increased the number of our students who are doing dual credit with ECTC and other universities. And they have a fall break the second week of October. And so we, in order to align with them, Dr. Pate has asked that the school districts change their fall break so that those students, especially the seniors, this is the last opportunity they will really have for a family vacation, or at least parents want them that senior year to be on their family vacations. So this will not happen next year. It will be the following year. So we just want to give families enough time to maybe change your reservation in Gulf Shores or Pensacola Beach, Hawaii, wherever it is you go, to change that to the second week. And that will be during the 23, 24 school year that you will need to do that. So you have about a year and a half to prepare for that. The other details about the calendar, as far as when we'll start that school year, that will not come until November of 2022.
So I'll have to change my plans in Elizabethan three years from now, right?
Yes, yes.
Great. Okay. And we also received the monthly financial reports. Have a few change orders still out there on East Harden Middle School that we're clearing up. And hopefully everything's really going well out there. The school looks great. Always a few things to complete. And we had the certified personnel classified actions that's been taken. So anyone have anything they want to express more concerns on? Or we'll need a motion here in a little while to approve. Or if you want to pull out anything, you can, we'll talk about it. Move to approve the consent agenda? Have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda? Any other discussion? Not? All in favor? Second five of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And action items, any action items we need to bring up? I think one out on internet today, or social media and so forth, masking is changing effective tomorrow?
Immediately.
Immediately, okay. We had, had a lot of discussion about that. We've heard pros, cons, and some were just opinions, I guess. But we've reached a point where we feel like that this is what we need to do. So we're currently taking the masking away. Be glad for you to wear one if you so desire and feel perfectly free to do it. I'm not saying that it's a bad thing to do, but you're on your own. And we, we certainly appreciate the people that have honored the system that we had. And it's a tough decision to make. We done what we thought was right. And we, not always right, but we felt like that we done the best that we could do in this situation. New business? You want to have any new business?
No, sir.
We got things under pretty good control here tonight. Superintendent's report. Has the superintendent got a report for us?
Yes.
Good.
First off, it has been an exceptional year. Mr. Sutton shared exceptional growth today at our noon meeting. We are back as far as growth before, pre-pandemic. We shared that with our principals earlier this week and the amount of work that has gone into that. And part of that success is this year, we have been able to be in school, in person, all but about six days with NTI. Two of those were NTI, what we called NTI COVID days, and the other ones were NTI weather days. And then we, of course, had the two snow days. But that takes a lot of work and dedication on our staff, and we really appreciate their hard work and dedication. This week, see Officer Gillingham over here, is SRO Appreciation Week, and last week was Counselors Week. And I just want to give a shout out to them. First off, our local law enforcement is a huge safety feature for us. And not only the safety feature, but our students, if you will be in our hallways, you will start to see, I know when I was younger, we would hear, oh, there's an officer, you know, behave. And you would hear parents saying, well, there's an officer. I might tell them what you're doing if you don't behave. And that has totally changed because of the rapport that our officers have in our school buildings, walking in the halls, having lunch with students, talking to them during lunch. So they feel much more comfortable in all of their interactions, not just during the school day, but outside the school as well. When you go out to eat, you will see them laughing and talking. And instead of our students going the opposite direction, they actually walk up to them to have those conversations. We have had a few situations this year where some students have had, made some bad choices. And our students felt comfortable enough to immediately report that to law enforcement and to their school administrators. And then immediately, law enforcement works with us to help clear up those situations so that our students continue to feel safe in school. The week before this one, we celebrated Counselors Week. And it was really fun to go into the schools to see all the special packages they received. I see Wanda Ballard and Latoya back here. They created packages or gift bags to take out to our counselors just to say thank you for the job that they're doing in the buildings. Also, our nurses received some care packages as well. So just the amazing part that our counselors do each day, our schools have a form that our students can fill out, need to see the counselor so they don't have to leave the classroom. And when that counselor's ready for them, they can come down and share what they need to with the counselor. So in a time that we've talked about the impact of COVID, counselors are playing a, a significant role in the success of our students. So just a huge shout-out to our counselors and to our law enforcement. Thank you for making us better and safer each and every day.
Thank you. And as we've been through the last week or two, our legislators are up there talking about making it mandatory for all schools to have SRO officers. Are they taking their notes from us? Because we've been there for a good while and we appreciate that.
Absolutely.
All right. Executive session, we, we're okay on that tonight. Board calendar, February the 21st, President's Day, school dismissed. February the 25th through the 27th, I think all the board members here will be at some time or another in Louisville, attending the KSBA conference and getting the required hours that we have to have. And March the 17th, we're going to be at East Harden Middle School for the noon meeting in central office at 6:00 PM. Anyone have anything else they need to bring up? Not? Make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn. Second?
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor? Second five of saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for coming out. Be safe going home in the rain.